We'll call this meeting to order. I'll make sure they heard it. Um, we just come back from a closed session meeting. Mr. Rudolph, you have anything to report?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council members. The council's in closed session this evening. A conference of legal counsel on existing litigation on two cases, and there's no action to report.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. Liz, can you roll call, please?
Councilor Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Champion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Okay. And if we could all stand for a flag salute and a silent prayer? Mr. Champion, would you lead us in the salute, please? Okay, silent prayer first. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Silent prayer first. Just trying to give a heads up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have any agenda approval additions or deletions? Okay. Next on the agenda is presentations. We have a proclamation, and I believe that would be Mr.--
Uh, Jeff Chapman, would you please join me down here at the podium? I want to thank the city council. Uh, the shop local committee has decided to recognize some of their oldest and most loyal businesses over the next year. And the first one that came to mind was Robinson's Feed. And, uh, I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then I'm gonna ask Jeff to talk about how long you've been there and some of the good things about Robinson's Feed. Whereas William Robinson established its first feed store in Lodi in nineteen oh six, and whereas the store is passed down to the generations and is currently managed by William's great-grandson, Rex Olsen, and whereas Robinson's Feed has been serving friends and neighbors since nineteen forty-eight in Galt when they opened their second store on the old Lincoln Highway. And whereas the Galt store relocated to its current location in nineteen fifty-two to better serve the growing community, community, and whereas Robinson's Feed has remained a committed loyal employer for Galt citizens, especially for the youth, and whereas Robinson's Feed continues to support and donate to the many local events sponsored by organizations and schools in the Galt area. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the city council of the City of Galt, California, does hereby recognize Robinson's Feed Company for their outstanding service to the Galt community. That's it. Congratulations, employees. I just wanted to add that the Olsen's were very strong in wanting to have Jeff, uh, represent them here tonight as one of their oldest and best employees.
Thank you very much. I think it's quite an honor to--
Barbara? Take a picture.
Receive, uh, an award. Oh, sure, sure. There's one? Okay, alright. Okay, alright, well, I think, um, the City of Galt, um, my hometown, and the city council, and everybody here tonight, and, you know, I don't know exactly what to say other than the Olsen family has been my, uh, my second family. You know, they're not, they're not blood, but they're, they're like the people that have stood behind me through thick and thin and, and all the decisions that I've made over the years and with my health and, and my career. Very supportive and, and I couldn't ask for a better employer. And back to the City of Galt, I, I love this town. It's my hometown. I, I, uh, I grew up here. I went to school here. I, uh, stayed here, and I really like, uh, see Galt flourish, and anything that I can do to help the community, I'd be willing to do so. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we got a certificate of recognition. Uh, Mr. Winkler, you have something to do with that?
Well, I, uh, unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot to do with it other than being able to take, uh, an opportunity to commend one of our staff. Uh, I'd like to invite, um, George Bradley to come down. He's a former past president of the Maintenance Superintendent's Association of California and, uh, the local chapter, and I don't wanna steal a whole lot of his thunder, but, um, Aiden Shelby, uh, did receive, uh, a very distinguished award from the local chapter, and I'll, I'll let George explain that in a moment. Uh, as he's doing that, I'm gonna pass down a number of their, uh, recent newsletters, which has an article featuring what he's gonna talk about, uh, frame bull or, or suitable for framing Aiden with, uh, and that's the orange tab in the back. They also, uh, tabbed a couple of things, the opportunities that they provide as educational and opportunities for career development, uh, among, uh, folks in the maintenance field for whether it be roads, streets, utilities, or even parks, uh, and so, uh, we appreciate MSA providing those resources to us, and so, each invited to have a copy of that and read the article regarding Aiden. With that, George?
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council, staff, citizens of Galt, uh, several of us are here to honor one of yours, which we wanna thank you in advance for sharing with us. My name's George Bradley. I'm retired from the City of Lodi four years ago last week. It's a good thing to say. And, and I offer that as encouragement. Several of us, we refer to Maintenance Superintendent's Association as MSA, and our chapter is the North Central Valley Chapter, or NCVC, so we try and shorten things up, especially since we know council's time is so valuable. The folks that are from MSA, can you raise your hand right now that are, they're here? So, there's a few. And we have an executive board that watches over the entire association. I'm gonna give you a brief summary of who MSA is. If you look on the back of the first page, uh, that's the E-Board, the Executive Board. And our immediate past president is Mr. Peter Cordopos with Caltrans out of the Bay Area. Peter, would you wait to raise your hand? Another executive board past president is Mr. Jerry Dankbar from Roseville, from two oh, two oh nine. Jerry? Thank you. You guys are done, you did good. There's about eighteen hundred members. We've been around since nineteen sixty-six. Uh, we started off with streets, but we found that we had so many things in common with water, sewer, parks, buildings, airports, uh, fleet maintenance, uh, that we didn't limit ourselves to just the California Street Maintenance Association. We're made up of local agencies, cities, counties, state agencies, and industry people, uh, people that sell us streets for sewer cleaner, science, paint. Uh, the other nice thing about this association is we have free dialogue back and forth. If Aiden has a concern or an issue, he's thinking about buying something, he has something that's not working out, he can ask these eighteen hundred people what they've done. Chances are, they've already broke that wheel and figured out a way to change the tire. One of the other things, the main thing that, uh, MSA focuses on, and this doesn't pertain directly to the ward, tonight is education. Don't bother now, but on page, uh, ten and eleven, there are a bunch of online classes that MSA has worked with, uh, community colleges that directly help support, support our type of maintenance leadership and, uh, interacting with our citizens. Uh, page nine talks about conference classes that are coming up next week. There's a conference going on, and every year, there are a lot of certified required certi- certificate classes that MSA puts on, as well as a lot of local affordable half-day, one-day classes, so that our orange shirts can grow and develop and become a more valuable part of, uh, our agency. Aiden, would you please come down here, please? See, I don't even look, I know he's coming. He's so well-trained, you guys have done a great job. This, this ward's a little bit late because of medical issues in Aiden's family, uh, but we're pleased to be here at this time. Uh, this award is our Superintendent of the Year Award, and Aiden achieved this award from his peers in the North Central Valley Chapter. Uh, over the last decade, he has held every office we have, Secretary, Treasurer, President, Vice President, um, Village Whipping Boy. And he's currently serving on our Executive Board as one of our two delegates. Each chapter gets to send a, a delegate. One of the things that's made Aiden stand out is he's taken advantage of all of these educational opportunities to further his career here with Galt and to help strengthen his individual employees. And he's taken on a role that wasn't lost on us, that he started mentoring, planning for succession, helping some of your current employees be better prepared for what the future might have. I'd like to share with you that Aiden is a great ambassador for the City of Galt, um, and it's because of these sustained efforts and dedication that the North Central Valley Chapter would like to honor Aiden with this award as Superintendent of the Year, two thousand twelve.
I didn't plan on saying anything, but I, I really have to say that, uh, the networking part of the MSA has been, been great for me. I mean, when I got into supervision with the city, I had a lot of years in management, not a lot of years working on streets, storm brains, any of that stuff, so when I had a question, I, it was great to be able to reach out to Roseville, Rockland, Lodi, and, and get answers, so, uh, just thank you.
Good job. If, uh, if you can just hold on a second, uh, the city also has, uh, a recognition for you, Mr. Shelby, and I'm gonna-- Okay. Yeah, we hear you. I'm gonna read this, and then we'll come down and do all your pictures for you. Uh, this presented in recognition, uh, of your outstanding, uh, award, Aiden Shelby. Congratulations. Uh, the Maintenance Superintendent's Association North Valley Chapter awarded you Superintendent of the Year for two thousand and twelve. The City of Galt wishes to recognize your outstanding leadership and contribution to the City of Galt, uh, recognized on this third day of September two thousand thirteen, and signed by Mary Lou Powers, our, the current mayor. And thank you again for all your service.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Headed for a private roast now, though.
Yes, yeah. Well, they're filing out, um, I would just like to say that, uh, Mary Lou Powers is under the weather today, uh, is why she could not make it tonight, so I am, am, uh, lucky enough to be able to sit in her spot for tonight's meeting, and I wish her well. Okay, next we have public comment? No? Overdue? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, Miss Sylvia Coelho, uh, from our Galt Police Department, uh, has got a presentation for us. There you go. She's our SRO officer for, uh, the PD here. You're very welcome. Thank you for being here.
I'm doing a little presentation today about school, the School Resource Officer position. I have been the, in the position since last August, so I've had one year of experience at this school. So, what do we do? What do I do? I'm a teacher, I'm a counselor, I'm a professional law enforcement officer. The School Resource Officer Program was developed to address juvenile crime and safety concerns in our local schools. The SR program places a police officer in the middle and high schools with the goal of creating and maintaining a safe, secure, and orderly learning environment for students, teachers, and staff. Ideally, what we'd like to have is a school resource officer in the middle schools and each high school, full-time. No way I don't have to put out flyers and keep racing to other schools. The SRO program reflects the community's desire to ensure that it's, the schools are safe and secure. That's reflected by the passing of Measure R. That's where my salary is paid, through Measure R. School safety, to provide a safe learning environment in our schools. The education code requires schools to, to develop a comprehensive school safety plan which the Galt Police Department is a part of. We provide a visual deterrent to criminal activity, and we enforce laws and investigate crimes on campus. School-based policing is the fastest-growing area of law enforcement. There are over three thousand SROs in the globe, around the globe. We assist communities and school districts and desire safe schools and effective community friendships. Again, I do mentoring, I do advise, give advice, support, I have contacts and resources not only for the students, but for the, the school staff and admin. The big red box, the crisis response, we all saw that on Friday. It's not really a red, big red box, it's a big red binder, and in that binder, we have access to aerial photos, school maps, the campus layout, employee rosters, emergency contacts, where the fire and gas shut-offs are in each school. I have access to emergency contacts for students and photographs of those students, should we need those. Also, and those are the command post and staging areas. Statistics, uh, on statistics, crime is down, violence and non-violent crimes like bullying is also down. That's alcohol, drugs, and gang activity is also down. SROs bring a specialized knowledge of law, local and national crime trends and safety threats. I have to go through a specialized training to become a ca- a school resource officer, so it's not only just the law enforcement aspect that I'm bringing by my office, bringing that special skill to the schools. I function as a police officer in the school setting, I'm a resource and a problem solver. I develop teaching skills, I go and ta- talk to the kids in, in special settings, like the seventh graders that come into the middle school, tell them the nice things, that if we all obey the rules, they won't be seeing me. School resource officers provide a positive role mo-- we provide a positive role model for students who are not exposed to such role models in today's society. Their presence in the school sends a strong message that violence and certain behaviors are not acceptable. Since August, I've had forty-three arrests, so we have a no-tolerance policy. That special skill set, again, um, that enables us to protect the community and campus while supporting the educational mission for the students. Any questions? Nope? Good, thanks.
Does anybody have any questions, the council? I, I'm just curious, what, what grade level do you find most challenging? Or grades? Grade or grade level?
Actually, the middle school.
Really?
Yes, 'cause they're, they're just coming out of the, you know, the elementary school, and they're just getting that little bit of, you know, am I old enough to push the button yet, or am I not old enough? And so, they, they try, but, um, the high school students, they already know which buttons they can and can't push, so they, they know.
Just gauge them whether to get caught or not.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you. Very good. Mark?
Nope. Just slide to have it.
I have a question. You mentioned that the--
Sorry, that slide's over.
Okay, uh, it says you have, uh, emergency contacts and photos. How, how often are those? Are those photos updated every year that, that kids change of school?
Yeah, every year, yeah.
Okay, 'cause, you know, kids change from year to year so much, so--
The school picture that they take for the yearbook, or, for, yeah. Every year is updated.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you. Ms. Coelho, Officer Coelho? Okay, now.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and SherWest Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Also, a little late, but please turn, turn off or silence all your cell, cell phones.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Yep, would you let me do public comment?
Oh, you just did videotape, I'm sorry, yes. I'm still a rookie, so excuse me if you, okay?
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item, item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrance to, to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk, and I have no speaker sheets.
No speaker sheets, okay. We'll move on to the information and consent calendar. You wanna read, uh, items one through three?
We have three items. The first one, approval, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of August twentieth, two thousand thirteen. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants, and number three, two thousand fourteen dental and life insurance benefit renewal.
Okay, motion approved, move to approve.
Second.
Motion's-- Rob, and, and seconding? And take, uh, vote, please.
Okay, council members, Payne?
Aye.
Champion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Okay. Move to, uh, regular calendar and, uh, City Manager's Office. Mr. Bearman?
Yes, good evening. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, my distinct pleasure to present this item to you this evening. The item is the Union Pacific Railroad lease, which is something that staff has been working on for many years, and something actually, when I first started about seven years ago, we were, we were working on, so it's taken a long time, really proud to be able to present this item to you this evening. Chief, maybe if you could, uh, or Liz, we have a--
Oh, you do?
Item up there.
I didn't have that marked, I'm sorry.
It's alright. Um, this is just a diagram of kind of the city's plans. We hired calendar and associates several years ago to put together conceptual plan of the railroad property, and what you see up there on the screen is the east side of the tracks from Robinson's Feed, we just talked about tonight, all the way to F Street. Um, this lease actually encompasses both sides of the track, both east and west sides. The, the lease is for twenty years. It is mainly for beautification purposes, as well as parking, as you can see in the diagram up here. Uh, right now, most of the space is just vacant weed fields. There is a small portion of it that has some palm trees and some grass that's used occasionally, but the majority of it is just, uh, is just an open field. So, the intent is to beautify it, uh, turn it into nice open space, uh, parking that would support the businesses down there, hopefully in the future, support a future entertainment center. It's important to note, though, that this lease is not for active park use, this will not become an active park for games and activities and so forth, uh, but it will beautify that space and enhance the downtown, old town part of our, our community. Some of the other key provisions of the lease, um, is a one-time payment from the city to Union Pacific Railroad in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, that will secure the twenty-year lease. There is a termination provision that both the city and Union Pacific can exercise with thirty days' notice. If the railroad terminates the lease within the first ten years, the city will receive a reimbursement of its investment, the twenty-five thousand dollars, on a prorated basis. Um, the lease does require the city to install an eight-foot-high vandal-resistant fence along the eastern portion of the railroad tracks, about at the fifty-foot line from the center line of those, those tracks. Um, city will also assume maintenance responsibilities for the leased area on both sides of the track. Um, the other thing that the lease does is it grants us the ability to construct these improvements, as you see up on the screen, without having further authorization from Union Pacific. That's been one of the contentions over the years, is what level of improvements they would allow on their property, and so, we've, this actual diagram has been negotiated and is built into the, the lease itself, so we won't have to, to haggle with them in the future in order to move forward with this. Uh, we have, like I said, we've done conceptual design, we have not moved forward with final design and construction document, documents for this yet. We are, uh, the, the construction of this is contingent on the city's use of bond proceeds from redevelopment, the redevelopment agency, and that's in limbo right now. The state, as you know, killed the redevelopment agencies across the state a couple of years ago, and so our bond proceeds, about seven million dollars' worth, are held up. We're hoping to be able to, to, to use those and spend those to improve this property, as well as to bring in the, the theater complex, as well as some other projects we have down there, but right now, that's uncertain. In the event that we're not able to, to do that, or to use those bond proceeds, we can still do some of the beautification work down there, it may take more time, may take the, uh, grants that we can apply for and secure, may take volunteer efforts through some of the projects and programs we've had over the years, and I think we can get some of that work done. Obviously, the parking, uh, would probably be one of the last things we'd be able to do, but we can still put a simple, you know, graded field out there and, and allow cars to park there, would certainly still issue, uh, relieve some of the, the, uh, the parking concerns down in that area. So, we're hoping that we'll be able to get clear on the bond proceeds and move forward with that, but right now, that project is on hold. The one thing that is important to note is the improvements that are along the Fourth Street side, so, I'll just, I'll just point it here, it's a little bit hard to see, but along this yellow line, along the frontage area, um, there is angled parking all along here, there's some landscaped areas, there's a new sidewalk that goes all the way, right now, there's no sidewalk on this side, goes all the way down along the frontage here, some trees, some landscaping, some new pedestrian crossing points on Fourth Street. Those, all of that work will be done. That's part of the two million dollar grant we received from SACOG to do that Fourth Street frontage work, so we won't be able to do all of the open space improvements or the parking, but we will be able to at least do the frontage along Fourth Street, which will still be a big improvement in the Old Town area. Uh, let's see. So, the, the project does require an initial upfront investment of twenty-five thousand dollars. Staff recommends that that funding come from Fund eleven, Capital Parks, which can be used for open space and other projects of similar nature. The fence installation estimate is over a hundred thousand dollars. We're, we're recommending that we incorporate that project as part of the quiet zone effort, which we're undertaking right now. We've got the design basically done, we're waiting some, for some final approvals. So, later this year, we likely will be out to, to bid on that project, and so, um, if we need a further appropriation from council, we'll come back at that time, once we get the award of that contract, but the, the recommendation is that we use community development block grant funds for that, for that whole project. Right now, the quiet zone project is scheduled to use CDBG funds, and so this would just be added to that. Um, and we have not yet allocated or programmed the two thousand fourteen CDBG fund, so there's some funding available potentially for that project if we do need additional funds. The recommendation is that the council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the proposed lease with Union Pacific Railroad for property in Old Town and appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from Fund eleven, Capital Parks. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Council, any questions?
Not much, or, not more of a question, more of a statement. About time. It's been close to twenty years.
Mr. Champion? Mr. Champion?
Yeah, and I was just looking through the lease. And I'm looking at the- it talks about Exhibit A, which you have an Exhibit A which looks like a railroad map. And then it makes reference to Exhibit B, but Exhibit B, it doesn't make- what it doesn't make reference to is Exhibit Year A2, showing the actual improvements. So my question becomes, unless I'm missing something, it doesn't- I don't see where it has the diagram that you were showing us, where the physical improvements were going to occur and to what extent?
I think it's in Article 5, Section C. It says, "Let's hereby consent to the construction and installation of the improvements depicted on Exhibit A2."
There it is.
Here to attach and made a part thereof, so that's the reference.
Okay, good, good.
Is that all you have, Ms. Champion?
No, I think it's a good idea. You know, like Mark said, the city's been working on this for over 20 years. And I'm glad to be a part of its completion.
Okay, Ms. Payne?
I would just add that this has been a project that has been of interest to me for a long time now. And now that we have some improvements down on Fourth Street with the Galt Place, it's going to be really nice for those people to look out at something other than weeds. And there's been some safety issues, too. We had some just big old holes that in the winter, they'd fill up with water. Couldn't tell if they were, you know, 12 inches deep or three feet deep. So I think I'm happy that we're actually going to be working on this, on both sides of our railroads. We have Harvey Park that can benefit from this looking better, as well as the businesses on Fourth Street, like Brewster House and Velvet Creamery. So I think it's a good way to spend our money. I think the community will really benefit from it.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, you had something?
I just wanted to throw one thing. I almost forgot about this. Now, we aren't going to forget about the possible historical finds out there.
You won't let us forget, will you?
Oh, I will not. It's number one, if we do find what I think's out there, it'll be a big draw for the downtown area.
Okay, want to open this up for public comment? Comment? Al?
Didn't go up here because of Mr. Mark. But appreciated, Al Baldwin, a very concerned citizen of this wonderful town in Galt, California. It's got great character and great people and old town. Of course, I've been an advocate for having one more thing over there, and I was hoping to hear that that was maybe, could be, part of the proposal with the railroad. 20 years isn't that long, but if they would approve or at least acknowledge that there was a roundtable at that time on those tracks, I can prove it because of the map. Your map didn't have it, the map I submitted did. That's the only thing. And the railroad will also make a comment that they believe it was there, too. And I was wondering if there's any chance that maybe that could be in negotiations with them. Now, it doesn't have to be right where it is on the map, because if you look out of Brewster's, you look down to the right a little bit out of the window, you can actually see where it's not growing half the time, because we- seems like we have a circle out there. And that's where the map says it was. I'm not saying that everything's down there, but if we can get a replica of a roundtable, the Historic Society for Chur can almost, I can't guarantee you, but we could probably get a train on there some way, whether a caboose or an engine from the Sacramento railroad. So if you could truly look into this and give it some extra thought, I emailed a lot of the council people, and I even gave them an idea of what a roundtable looks like it used to look. It's a basic one, but at least it shows it to you. And it's on YouTube, so you can take a look at it. I appreciate it. If you would consider looking into that, it will bring business to Galt. It'll be a tourist attraction. I'm not doing it just to get something there. I'm getting it to help Galt grow in the business area. And it'll be an attraction that no one else has except wholesome, and they're doing pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
I think the good thing about the lease is it doesn't preclude us from doing that, prohibit us that we would have to get railroad approval to do something. But there's nothing in the lease that would prevent us from doing something like that in the future if the funds were available, if the inclination was there.
Okay. Is that it? Then we'll call for a vote. Motion? Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Will you take a vote, please?
Councilmember Payne? Aye. Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
That was to adopt a resolution.
Next, we have Community Development Department, and it looks like you're not Kieru, so you're Mr. Arias, so take it away, sir.
Will do. Good evening. My name is Chris Arias, Senior Planner with the City's Community Development Department. The item you have before you is a workshop on the 2013-2021 housing element. Basically, the current cycle, or should say, the next cycle housing element. The purpose of the workshop is to provide you with an overview of the housing element process and allow you to provide any input on the policy approaches to addressing housing challenges in Galt. We hope to identify issues that should be addressed in the updated element. Tonight's workshop is the final step before creating the draft element. We then plan to come back to you at the next meeting on the 17th to get your authority to submit the draft to HCD. The city hired the consultant firm Minter and Associates to update the housing element, and Chelsea Norton is the project manager for Minter. She's working on completing the housing element for Galt. She will provide a presentation and then lead us through the workshop. After she's finished, she and I will be here to answer any questions you might have. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Chelsea.
All right, thank you, Chris. Is this microphone on?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Chelsea Norton, project manager with Minter Harnish. We were Minter Associates probably when we started working on the general plan years back. But I've been working with city staff on the housing element. I know that you're all familiar with the housing element. You've addressed the housing element a lot this year, having just adopted the last housing element. So I'm going to make my presentation brief, just focus on what we're changing about this housing element, and then open it up for discussion. So the housing element is an element of the general plan, but it has some unique requirements that set it apart from the other elements. It's the only element of the general plan where the state sets the timeline for when it gets updated. The housing element used to get updated every five years, but now, as of this housing element, the housing element will get updated every eight years. That's assuming that we meet the statutory deadline. There is a penalty for this round of housing element updates. If we don't meet the deadline, that- it turns into a four-year penalty. So you would be required to update your housing element every four years instead of eight years. The housing element's the only element of the general plan that gets reviewed by the state for compliance with state law. And the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, is the state department that's responsible for this compliance review. And at its core, the housing element is the city's plan to meet the existing and the projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. So like I was saying, this is a minor update of your last housing element. You just prepared the previous housing element. But we're taking a pass at this housing element to incorporate the most recent census data and other recent data reflecting the current state of the housing market, because things are changing very rapidly in the housing market. We've evaluated implementation of the previous 2008 to 2013 housing element. And we've updated the policy document to remove references to the redevelopment agency. Because when the last housing element was prepared, the redevelopment agency hadn't yet been eliminated by the state. So we're reflecting these changes and reviewing and updating the housing programs to remove what's been implemented and really streamline the housing element for this next round. At the core of the housing element is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or the RENA. The RENA is a process that's spelled out in state law. State law says that every jurisdiction in California must plan for its fair share of the statewide housing needs. And this is a process that starts at the state level. It starts with the Department of Housing and Community Development assigning a regional target of housing needs to the Sacramento region. SACOG, or the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, is responsible for distributing that target to all of the jurisdictions in the region. So the regional target for this next housing element cycle is about 105,000 housing units. So all of the jurisdictions in the Sacramento region need to accommodate 105,000 housing units. And Galt's share of that 105,000 housing units is 679 housing units. So this is a target for about an eight-year period. So over the next eight years, the city has to show how it can accommodate this many housing units. And those 679 housing units are broken down into different income categories, from extremely low income, which are households that make less than 30% of the median area income. Very low-income households make 50%, low-income households up to 80%, and then moderate and above-moderate income households. And when we talk about meeting the needs of- these slides are getting cut off a little bit. When we talk about meeting the needs of households of different income levels, what that really means, what state law means by that is the underlying assumption is that density equals affordability. So to demonstrate that you can meet the needs of lower-income households, you have to demonstrate that you have enough land zoned at 20 units per acre or for multifamily housing to meet the needs of your lower-income households. So in the housing element, we conduct a very parcel, a parcel-specific inventory of all of your residential sites in the city by zoning designation and identify the capacity on all of those sites to meet those, meet your RENA by different income categories. And the city can meet the RENA for this housing element cycle. You were able to meet it for your last housing element cycle. And the situation hasn't changed much. Much of that capacity is still available. Thank you to the housing crash, I suppose, but you- the situation has not changed much in terms of your capacity. Just to highlight some of the key facts and some of the findings from the updated housing element, this chart shows the change in median home sale price over the last 10 years in the City of Galt. And compares to current 2013, what's considered an affordable sales price for a moderate-income household, a low-income household, and a very-low-income household. And in the recent recession, the median sales price in the City of Galt was affordable to a low-income household. And it still is as of 2013, but we're looking at, you know, we're entering the housing element, or I'm sorry, the housing market recovery, and we're looking at sales prices going up. So while the market has become, you know, more affordable over time, we're looking at that changing, where a low-income household would probably have difficulty purchasing a home in this next housing element cycle. In the housing element, we're required to look at the housing needs of special needs groups that are defined by state law. These are just some examples of some of the findings from our background report in the housing element. The senior population in Galt increased by 38% from the 2000 to the 2010 census. There are nearly 3,000 people with disabilities in Galt. We look at the needs of single female-headed households with children, and that population increased from 7% to about 10% of the population between 2000 and 2010. And they have a 43% poverty rate. In- Galt has more large families than a lot of surrounding jurisdictions. 22% of households are considered large families, so that's a family of five members or more. We have to look at the needs of farmworkers, and about 5% of the city's workforce was employed in agriculture in 2010. And then finally, we have to look at the needs of the homeless population. And what we found in this housing element is that homelessness, the visibility of homelessness has really increased over the past few years, whereas the last housing element reported about five homeless people in Galt. In talking to service providers, service providers reported about 40 homeless individuals that they serve in the City of Galt. The housing element also looks at some of your more successful housing programs, and this is just a quick summary. The Housing and Rehabilitation Loan Program was a successful program in the City of Galt. Since the last housing element, the city provided 24 grants for housing rehabilitation and two loans totaling $75,000. With the loss of redevelopment, this program is in flux right now, but it's been a really important program in Galt. And there's a program for the city to explore new funding sources to try to continue this important housing program. And the city has a history of supporting affordable housing projects. Galt Place is a good example of this, an 80-unit affordable senior housing project. The city also provided assistance to Habitat for Humanity to obtain funds to construct two affordable, single-family homes. A unique aspect of this fifth cycle of housing element is HCD's streamlined review process. So HCD has recognized that since jurisdictions prepared their last housing element, not much has changed in terms of their capacity. Cities and counties are dealing with limited staff and financial resources. So they've developed a streamlined review process where they're trying to facilitate their review, which in the past could take six months to get through from start to finish, the compliance review for compliance with state law. So they're trying to shorten that review, and they're getting more of those reviews done in the first 60 days of their review period. But there are requirements to qualify for streamlined review. You have to have implemented certain requirements of state law. And in fact, the first two on this slide, you have to have implemented to even get a certified housing element. So it's important not only for the city to qualify for the streamlined review, but also to be able to get a certified housing element. You have to have implemented certain requirements of state law. And these are on the next agenda item. But very quickly, the first one is a requirement to permit an emergency shelter, so a homeless shelter, by right in at least one zone within the city. So that's a requirement of every jurisdiction in the state of California. The second is to, in your zoning code, treat transitional and supportive housing as residential use that's subject to the same restrictions as any other residential use of the same type in the same zone. So Chris will be presenting these items in the next, on the next item on the agenda. The third requirement to qualify for the streamlined review is to have a reasonable accommodation ordinance. And I believe staff is working on drafting one right now for your consideration in October. So the city is working on these different implementation programs to be able to qualify for HCD's streamlined review. And the reason streamlined review matters in this round is the adoption deadline for this housing element is the end of October, October 31st. But there's a state-mandated 60-day review period, so HCD has 60 days to review your housing element. The four-year penalty that I mentioned before will go into effect at the end of February. So if the city were to not adopt the housing element before the end of February, the city would be required to update it every four years instead of every eight years. So we're trying to push through the HCD streamlined review process to make sure that Galt can meet that deadline so that you're- you won't have to talk about- meet that deadline so that you won't have to talk about the housing element again for another eight years. So this slide shows our overall schedule. At the beginning of August, we held a stakeholder workshop, and a workshop with the Planning Commission, and we sent notices out to a long list of local stakeholders and publicized the workshop, but we got no attendance at the workshop. We just couldn't get people interested in talking about the housing element. We sent a follow-up email with a survey, you know, asking for additional input, but we just haven't really had that participation. Maybe it's housing element fatigue. I've heard that word a lot. I know you've been dealing a lot with the housing element lately. But we've been trying to get input, you know, if there are members of the audience here tonight that have input for the housing element, we're looking for that input so we can prepare the draft housing element, bring it back to you for your consideration, and then submit it to HCD for their review for compliance. So we'll be, we're planning to come back on September 17th for your consideration of the draft housing element, and then after submitting to HCD, you would be looking at, considering the housing element for adoption in January.
Okay, thank you.
Did that all answer any questions?
Do I have any questions? Ms. Payne?
I'm going to share a story with you, okay? Some time ago, I had a complaint from one of our citizens that lived in one of our newer senior housing apartment places. And her complaint was, this is strictly for seniors, and they were installing bathtubs that you have to step into. There was no kind of safety rail or grab rail for them to assist them. So the company was charging the seniors hundreds of dollars to open the wall and put in backing, which consists mostly of a two-by-six that a handrail or grab rail could be secured to. The major cost was, of course, to redo the sheetrock and everything. At that time, I checked with our building department to find out how we could allow senior apartments being built specifically for seniors without some concern for their safety. One of the major things that happens to seniors is falling, and I think most of us have had relatives or parents who have fallen, and if they break a hip, it can be devastating. In the meantime, I have recently talked to our staff, and they've come up with something that was actually passed in 2002 called Universal Design. And so I'd kind of like you to explain what that's about, see if that would help address this special need for our seniors. And the other thing is, most of the seniors that live in these apartments are low-income, and $200 or $300 out of their budget can mean a big difference to them, when it would just be so simple when the building is being constructed to put that backing in there, and then the handrail or the safety rail, the cost of that would be minimum.
Well, this is the perfect time to talk about something like that, because we can implement policies to help address that issue. And, you know, if you remember, one of the slides talked about the increase in the senior population in GALT, so probably is in our best interest to, you know, provide better amenities for housing for those seniors. In talking to the building inspector today, he had mentioned that the universal design concepts, which are basically requirements for building in amenities that are friendly for seniors and handicapped people to make things easier for them, whether that be thresholds that are easier for wheelchairs to get over into homes, wider doorways, wider hallways, could be light switches that are easier to hit, maybe a flat, something flat that's easier for a senior or somebody with arthritis to hit. And it could be something as simple as putting the backing in the bathrooms to make it easier for grab bars to be installed. So we're looking at incorporating that into policy for new homes in GALT. We don't know exactly how that's going to look yet. We'll have that when we come back with the draft to kind of fine-tune what that language may look like. It's my understanding that multifamily housing already has some of those requirements, so maybe we fashion ours on what is already required in multifamily.
Can you sort of give a description about what the universal design is about? One thing I wanted to emphasize is, it is mostly voluntary. It's something that if you're building a senior housing project, perhaps you show a model with the grab rails in, or some of these other things, so that the people that are, the market, the people that are purchasing the homes, have the option of having those installed at the time when it's less expensive. It's not necessarily going to increase the cost of homes, it's just giving an option to the buyer to have that. Now, if we're talking about apartments, where they're just renting them, I'm hoping we can, you know, make that mandatory.
Well, it sounds like the state had already done that. So for high-density apartments, the state already has requirements for backing for handrails and some other requirements. I'm not real familiar with all of them, but the state for the high density has already has requirements that they must meet, but for a single-family, there is not requirements. And we can tailor a policy to be more voluntary, or to be more optional for home builders rather than making them mandatory, but that's something we can look at to add. And I don't know if Chelsea can have anything to add.
Yeah, a universal design ordinance can take a lot of different forms. It can have mandatory requirements that a certain percentage of homes in a new subdivision must be accessible to seniors and people with disabilities, or it can be more voluntary, like you said, to give the option to new home buyers to install those before, as the home's getting built. So I think the city will probably want to explore the range of options on what types of housing, if it's a requirement, how many, what percentage of units, or whether it's a voluntary measure. So, it's a really good feedback, and we can reflect that in this housing element, and I think maybe it's in the form of a program for staff to explore these options and make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the timing is perfect, and this is the type of policies we should, that the housing element should have to reflect the population that we have.
And this, wasn't this actually a state law that was passed in 2002 to consider universal design?
I'm not sure when it was passed. I don't think, for a single-family, there are no requirements. It's just kind of a concept for a single-family.
Principle.
Right. And I'm not sure when it was implemented for high-density. I don't think it was adopted in 2002, otherwise our more current senior housing would have had it, or, so it must have been a little bit later than that.
I think the law that was adopted in '02 was to compel HCD to come up with a model ordinance, and they have done that, and the ordinance basically is one that some cities have adopted, which make it mandatory for builders to provide the option so that people that want to spend the money for these additional amenities can do so. And there is in fact a pilot program that's in place right now in the city of Sacramento. I think it's been going on for a couple of years, and that's exactly what they did, is they adopted the state HCD model ordinance, which is mandatory on builders to make the option available for single-family subdivisions that are 20 units or greater.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by council?
Just a question. Looking at your schedule here for, you know, your target dates, when the, I'm guessing, is it after the 60-day review that HCD would then be looking at a conditional letter of approval? Is that it?
Yes, exactly.
It would be. So it'd be sometime between there and what, the adoption hearings, or, I guess it would have to be before the adoption hearings, or?
Usually, what we've found in this round is that at the end of 60 days, we're able to get a conditional letter of approval. And that was unheard of in the past.
Yeah, you're right.
But I feel pretty confident that we can get that conditional approval letter at the end of 60 days. So we'd be looking at, you know, December probably for that conditional approval, and just given the holidays, we're expecting that we would probably be back here in January.
In working the last cycle housing element, we didn't get a formal letter, but we had informal conversations with them indicating that it met the requirements.
But they never did send you a letter?
Not a formal.
Oh.
Not until it was actually, after it was adopted by the city, then we got the formal letter.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, good. That's good. Okay, Liz, you want to? Is there any public comment on this, Mr. Baldwin?
Again, the old codger, by the way, that can relate to a lot of this, because I am in a senior modular home park. And if you really want to know what the seniors need, take a survey of the modular home parks, some of the apartments, and something else, and you'll get a definite idea of what's needed. I can give you a quickie one, real quick. Not that it's happened to me, but people where I live has had it happen. If you made showers with a lower threshold, so you don't have to step over it and trip when you get out, it'd be cool. And if you could, the toilets, now, the toilet seats, you know, people don't talk about toilet seats, but most seniors have a hard time going down and getting up. So that's why the big surge for toilets in a senior complex now is 17 inches high, which it really helps a lot. The older you get, the harder it is to sit down and get up. There's also, if you have a hall in a place, maybe if you could have some kind of a light near the bottom so they can see. At night, you get up, you can't see, especially if the power goes out and you're panicked. We have some single, older people in the park where I live, and they panic when the power goes out. It does happen in GALT once in a great while, and everything goes down. So they have to buy these automatic lights that come on. It'd be cool if you could get some kind of an automatic light in one in the bedroom, one in the hall, one in the front room, because they can't see at night, and the flashlights fall on the floor because they can't hold on to them. There's so many more things I could go through, but it's just the idea, I'm glad to see that you're thinking along these lines, because the increasing senior population is skyrocketing. And you've got to start taking care of them to keep them going, instead of trying to take care of them and let them fall and break their hips, like Barbara says. Try and prevent some of that stuff. Lighting is a very good thing, and, you know, people like solid doors and closets. They like a sliding closet. No one thinks about this, but if they fell and hit their head against the closet, a solid door could kill them. A hollow door would maybe break it and give them a slight concussion or cut, but a solid door could just boom, and they fall, and they trip, and everything else. Anyway, I could go on and on, but I wanted to say thank you for letting me at least, you know, give you an idea of what could happen. You said it's an ideal time, so I jumped at the opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. I did have one question, because of the number and the increase in seniors over the time period that you looked at. Is that based on age 55?
I think it's 65 and above.
It's 65 and above, so there's been a 38% increase in that age group? Wow.
It's a combination of an aging population and an increasing.
Sure.
The city of GALT, the population overall is increasing.
That surprises me. It wouldn't have surprised me so much if it was 55, though. Okay, so everybody's done? And this was just information, though?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to read that, or you want to go to the next one? Let's go to the next one. On Scheduled Matters, we have again Mr. Parias.
Hi, that's me again. We have a presentation. Hi, it's, good evening, Chris again, City's Community Development Department. The item you have before you now is a proposed amendment to the GALT zoning ordinance related to emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing. The proposal is to consider an amendment to Section 18.16.030 of the GALT municipal code to permit emergency shelters by right in the light manufacturing and public quasi-public zones. We are also proposing to amend the code by adding Section 18.20.035, emergency shelter development standards, and add definitions for transitional housing and supportive housing, and adding footnote 21 to the use matrix. Senate Bill 2, passed in 2007, required cities to identify zones where emergency shelters are permitted by right. It also requires that transitional housing and supportive housing be considered as a residential use. To comply with the state law, the previous housing element added policies 18 and 19 with action items to amend the code to comply with SB 2. In addition, as mentioned by Chelsea, HCD is offering a streamlined review of the current housing element for cities that are compliant with the state law. We are on target to qualify for the expedited review if we amend the code as requested. SB 2 also allowed local jurisdictions to establish development standards for emergency Emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing all relate to homelessness. The basic difference between the terms is the length of stay in that type of housing. An emergency shelter is just that, it's intended for emergency housing for the homeless on a limited and short-term basis. Transitional housing is a little bit longer term, usually lasting between six months to two years, and as its name implies, it's intended to transition people from homelessness to permanent housing. And supportive housing is even longer term, with potentially no limits on length of stay. It's intended to offer services to homeless to make sure they stay in permanent housing. Again, housing element policy, action item 18A from the previous, or I should say, the current housing element, requires the city to amend the code to allow emergency shelters by right in the LM and PQ zones. We identified those zones because emergency shelters are already conditionally permitted there. The change to the use matrix, Table 18.16-1, is shown on the screen, and you can see emergency shelter use in the left-hand column and the different zones on the top, and essentially the C is going to be changed to a P, and that means it's going from conditionally permitted to permitted by right. As previously mentioned, SB 2 allows for development standards for emergency shelters. We recommend adding Section 18.20.035, providing standards for emergency shelters. They can help address potential land use conflicts. I listed a few on the screen, but they're provided in detail in the ordinance. The standards include requiring that the shelter provide onsite security and a management plan that addresses items like supervision and more details on what client services they offer. And this slide shows the formal definitions that will be added to the zoning code. And as mentioned before, SB 2 requires that transitional housing and supportive housing be considered as a residential use and subject only to those restrictions that apply to other residential dwellings in the same type and the same zone. Currently, transitional and supportive housing is allowed in the city. We do not regulate how long people live in a house or who lives in a house. So compliance with the state law is just codifying what the city already allows. To ensure compliance with the law and to make sure it's clear that both these housing types will be treated like all other residential uses, we added footnote 21 to it, which basically refers back to the definitions found in 18.92. And that concludes my presentation. In summary, we are amending the code to comply with state law, to be consistent with the housing element, to qualify for HCD streamlined review of our upcoming housing element, and the ability to get our upcoming housing element certified. So we recommend that you conduct a public hearing to receive testimony, and that you introduce the ordinance approving the proposed amendments. And again, that concludes the presentation. I'll be here to answer any questions you might have. And again, that concludes the presentation. I'll be here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Mr. Harrius, council, have any questions? Yeah. Chris, under the definition, or it looks to be the definition of transitional housing, it says means buildings configured as residential housing developments. I don't quite follow what it means configured.
Good question. Are you talking about supportive housing?
I'm just looking. No, I'm looking. It says transitional housing. I'm just reading in the staff report. Under your discussion...
I think it's just the terminology to mean that it has to be, you know, the high-density housing, because there can't be commercial services intermingled with the housing pipeline.
So is the term configured? That's not part of the legal definition? Okay, okay. I wasn't sure. I couldn't find where it was. And then, but it's operated under program requirements. Is that outside social programs that are working? Again, it says under transitional housing. It says, "but are operated under program requirements and call for termination of assistance and recirculation of assisted unit to ineligible program recipient" at some predetermined future point in time. And I'm not sure what all that means.
Well, again, for transitional housing, typically it's... And, you know, as mentioned, we basically have...
Have six months to two years. And we won't monitor that. I mean, as I mentioned, the city, we already permit transitional and supportive housing because we don't discriminate against who lives in a house or how many people live in a house, where we regulate more density. So if a transitional housing group is in operation, we are not going to be monitoring how long they actually stay in that housing unit. I don't see us policing that. We don't now, and I don't imagine that would change.
It's clear as mud. I don't understand it. I don't understand the program requirements. And I can't read that far across the room, so I'm trying to... Is this the...
These are the formal definitions that are added to it. It's also found in the ordinance in the staff report package. So these are the formal definitions being added. And they do just define, you know, again, length of stay in transitional and supportive... Well, technically, there is no length of stay in supportive housing. But transitional housing does have a limit on length of stay.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if this helps at all, but, you know, we're doing this to comply with state law. And the definition of transitional housing is actually spelled out in the Health and Safety Code. And it's defined in that Health and Safety Code provision as buildings configured as rental housing developments but operated under program requirements that call for, and so on. So basically, the wording that you find in the ordinance before you is taken right out of state law, for better or for worse.
Okay, so that is the definition?
Yes, it is.
Well, hopefully, somebody knows what all that means.
Well, we don't, when we don't, there's no special permit required?
No, there's no regulation. It's, I understand. I understand what you're saying. But they write a definition for something that nobody monitors and really, I don't know that... Unless maybe you have to get a license to be an operator of a transitional house. And I don't even, is that...
Well, state law may require that from nonprofits that operate it, but I believe nonprofits are exempt from, like, a business license in the city, so they don't technically even need a business license to operate in the city. So they can't, and we have, there's one transitional housing operating now. It's over by J.C. Hall. I don't know if it's for homelessness or... I mean, there are different types of transitional housing. The ones we work with are to address homelessness. But again, because we don't monitor, we don't know if it's a battered woman's transitional housing. So there are different types in that manner. That's all.
Mr. Cruz? Ms. Payne? Okay, I'm going to hook this up to public comment. You want to read the... That first, or you want public comment first?
We have nothing to public hear.
Public hearing? Al, are you sure? Okay, well, it's a public hearing. And Liz, if you could read the proposed action?
Okay, the recommendation, conduct a public hearing to receive testimony and introduce an ordinance approving the proposed zoning text amendments to allow emergency shelters by right in the light manufacturing and public quasi-public zones, adding Section 18.20.035, emergency shelter development standards, adding definitions for transitional housing and supportive housing, and amending Section 18.16.030 and Table 18.16-1 by adding footnote 21.
So moved.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
And we will... Communications?
Do you have any?
No communications? Okay, we're going to adjourn to the Galt Successor Agency. Can you call roll, please?
Board members Payne? Campion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Powers?
Okay, we have any public comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
No speaker sheets? Okay, we have the information consent agenda? Please?
Okay, we have two items. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of August 20th, 2013, and approval of the successor agency warrant.
Move to accept.
Second.
Call for a vote, please? When you're done?
Board members Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Cruz?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go down to departmental. Can you read that subject, please?
A resolution of the successor agency adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule for January through June 2014.
I assume...
Good evening.
I was going to say Ms. Kiru, but then she can...
But Michelle Mealy, accounting manager, is actually making the presentation this evening, so go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Pursuant to AB 1484, the successor agency is required to submit the recognized obligation payment schedule, or ROPS, to the State Department of Finance on a semi-annual basis. The ROPS for the period of January 1 through June 30, 2014, is before you for your approval this evening. Enforceable obligations for this period include debt payments, consultant services, and administrative allowance, and initiation of the repayments to the City of Galt for the cooperative agreement. In addition, the ROPS includes a true-up of prior period expenditures related to January through June 2013. Adoption of the ROPS will authorize the successor agency to forward the ROPS to the Oversight Board, whose approval is required prior to forwarding of the ROPS to the various agencies by the October 1 deadline. I'll be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
I'm biting my tongue.
No questions.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. We call for motion, please?
Move the recommendations.
Second. Call for a vote, please?
Board members Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, and thanks again, Michelle. I'm going to close the, adjourn the successor agency and reconvene to the Galt City Council for the city court report.
Just a couple reminders. This Saturday, we have our Country in the Park event at Walker Park from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and you'll probably hear a little more about it as we go along. A reminder, the city offices are closed on Monday, September 9th, for admissions day. We also have the Galt Youth Committee on September 9th at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers. On September 11th, we have a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. I believe that's been canceled. No, it hasn't. It's still on. I'm sorry. September 12th, the Planning Commission meeting, 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers. And that takes us to our next city council meeting on September 17th.
Okay, how about comments by staff?
Mr. Herman? I know you've all received the invitation, but we are having the Walmart groundbreaking ceremony on Thursday at 11 o'clock. So some good news, finally getting that project underway on the heels of our roundabout project or go-around project. I've heard people call it many different things. He's not here anymore.
He was here.
Any staff have any other comments? I know.
And he was here earlier.
He was.
Yes, I wanted to go ahead and report to council that I believe we did include this in the weekly of the city managers on this past Friday, but wanted to advise council that we were able to secure financing for the water meter project. So we're still working through the details, but the parameters that council gave us was that the amounts could not exceed $3,100,000, a 15-year term, and interest rate of 4%. And we were successful in financing $3,075,000. So we came under the cost of issuance. Instead of $100,000, we're looking at less than $75,000. The interest rate is at 3.04%. So, and the term is 15 years. So we're still working through the details. We expect that we'll be going through legal review of documents and be able to close within the 60-day guideline, that timeframe. But I am pleased with the efforts of staff members that we were able to at least present that, and we signed a commitment letter last week.
Is that all for staff?
I'm happy to announce that we had a new officer start last Monday. And we have another officer starting next Monday, which will replace two of the vacancies we have. The first officer is Brooke Bash. Like I say, she started last Monday. And the other officer coming on board is Jonathan Johnson.
Thank you very much, Chief, and thanks for all the effort to get more officers on the street. I sure appreciate it. I know this isn't...
Can I ask you...
Absolutely.
How many officers do we need now to fill our roster of officers?
Five more.
Five more?
All right. Okay, comments by city council? Mr. Cruz?
Another thing.
Because I know she's got something to say, so I'm just waiting.
You can spotlight on that.
You can talk.
Well, that I knew. We have a bunch. You want to do jointly?
Yeah, let's one, two.
Yeah, well, Ms. Payne, why don't you start, and then we can throw it on over to you.
Country in the Park, this weekend, it's going to be a lot of fun Saturday. Come out. We're going to have a lot of old-time events. Everything from horseshoes to cow paddy tossing. Still trying to figure that one out.
It's a surprise.
A lot of vendors out there. Also, though dwindling, I'm told, we're going to have quite a few of the older-style farm utilities and vehicles out there for you to look at. And I'll give it to you now.
We have some live music by Liberty Junction, I believe. And again, we'll be recognizing Robinson's steed. It just fits in so perfectly with Country in the Park to have Robinson's steed out there. We hope to have a demonstration on milking a cow, sharing the sheep, and maybe spinning wheel. Take the wool from the sheep and spin it on the wheel, and it'll be fun. Special notice, we had an Eagle Scout that has done a tremendous job installing four brand-new horseshoe bins. Yeah. What are we forgetting? Right, the last... I should, shouldn't I? The last count, we had like 30 vendors?
No, or 35.
30, 35 vendors gonna display their wares and show what they got. So we're really hoping that the community will turn out. It's amazing when you say, "come out to Walker Park", they don't know where it is unless you have someone playing football or soccer or something. And by the way, there will be football games going on, the artificial stuff, turf, and soccer games going on on the grass field. And our wonderful CAPS volunteers will be out there to help direct the traffic. I wanted to mention them. And if I don't see you guys out there on Saturday, I'm going to be very disappointed. So come on out. It's free.
It's at 9:00.
Yep. Oh, I have more. Are we through with that?
We have that stand.
Stand, yeah, the...
Iron Dragon will be out there for presentation as well.
True. We done with Country? Okay, then the other thing, you will notice I'm wearing this button that Al Baldwin generously made for us, and it says, "Remember, use the calendar." At the last council meeting, we approved the Galt Community Alliance, with one of their main tools is a community calendar. And so we have our Facebook page. I know you can't see it very well, but I'll post it out there. And it tells you our address, www.galccommunityalliance.com. And up here, there's just a little box, and it says, "suggest an event." And you push on that little box, and it tells you how to put your event on the calendar. So we're kind of proud of that, that we've gotten that far.
It's a lot of work done very quickly.
Yep, it is. And then the other thing I'd mention, we had a really good cast meeting, which is cities and schools together. And I think that's something that this community is really, should be really proud of. Over the years, we have built such a great relationship between the schools and the city. And as you may or may not know, the elementary school got a $10 million grant from the feds in the Race to the Top program. And Superintendent Karen Showers, Dr. Karen Showers, has said the reason, and she's wanting more, is because of all of the community support and involvement. I know our police department is huge as far as being supportive with the programs in the schools. So just wanted to mention that that is a really good committee that we have going. I think I'm done.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Payne. The only thing I have is, I just got back Friday from Laffo Conference. It was up in the hills, it was rather smoky, but I will be applying those things that I learned up there to not only my seat on Laffo, but also here to the city as it pertains to the city. And another thing is, I thank the In-Chief for all the work you've done with PD and increasing our force. They're doing a great job. Thank you. And that's all I have, unless somebody has anything else. Being adjourned at, what is it, 8:28?